And good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Lenore for Tuesday, June the 16th, 2020. We welcome you here this evening. Again, we are meeting as we have been for the last few months with a quorum group here of council members here in the meeting hall with us, and we have several that are on the virtual Zoom with us coming in. So I'm going to do a quick roll call, if that's okay, make sure we know who is here. Here in the auditorium, here in the meeting room with us, not the auditorium, in the meeting room, myself, Mayor Joe Gibbons, Councilmember Ike Perkins, Councilmember John Beal, Councilmember Todd Perdue, Councilmember Ben Willis. Now, I'll ask for a roll call of those that are with us in, on the virtual, if you would, please. Councilmember Kristi Thomas, or Mayor Pro Tem Kristi Thomas?
I'm here.
Okay. Councilmember Ralph Presswood?
I'm here.
Councilmember David Stevens? And City Attorney TJ Rohr?
I'm here.
Okay. And our department heads, if you would, I won't call if you just go ahead and tell us who is here with us. On air. In any order.
Thank you.
Radford Thomas, Public Security.
Thank you, Radford.
Donna, any comments?
Thank you, Donna.
Ken Storey, Recreation.
Thank you, Kenny.
Eric Rott, Public Works.
Thank you, Jared.
Kenny Will, thank you.
Kenny?
Chief Mayor, pardon.
Chief Herr, thank you. And Chief Phelps is with us here this evening. We'll be hearing from him in just a little bit. And Joshua Harris, our communications director, is also here. And we welcome Kara from the News Topic is with us. Thank you on that.
Shirley Cannon's also.
Shirley, okay. And Shirley Cannon, our city clerk, is with us. Thank you, Shirley, for being here. And I think, is it Mr. Alan Robertson with Robertson Bradshaw Attorneys is with us? Are you here, sir?
I am, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll recognize you in just a little bit. Thank you, sir. Okay, I believe that covers everybody. And as we always do with our meetings, we'll start in just a minute with our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Please continue in your prayers for our community during this very stressful time that we've been going through for the last several months with our pandemic COVID-19. We continue our prayers for all those who are helping to fight this every way they can on our, on our front lines with our workers and our healthcare facilities and leaders and all of that, testing facilities, doctors, nurses, and everybody who has been involved, and certainly our police and fire and EMS and Sheriff's Department and others who are constantly working every day to keep these things, everything moving and safe, and all of our workers who were taking care of all the facilities of Lenore. We keep you all in our thoughts and prayers, and please continue to be safe. Also, continue your thoughts and prayers for the family of George Floyd, and also please continue your prayers for peace and understanding as we move through these times in our, in our country right now. We hope that we will continue to move in the right direction, make the right moves, and to work on that, many things that we're trying to do right now. So, thank you for all of that, and we will, please, now rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move into our agenda this evening. First, we have a matter scheduled for our public hearing. We have a resolution tonight. This is involving the Blue Ridge Healthcare System Incorporated. This hearing will be held to consider approval of Blue Ridge Healthcare System Incorporated's proposal by a resolution of tax-exempt bonds that will be issued by the Public Finance Authority of the State of West Conson, which is the authority, for the benefit of Blue Ridge Healthcare System Incorporated in order to refinance its existing debt, the 2010 A Bonds and the 2016 A Bonds, and finance improvements to its hospital facilities. Please note, while all of the new improvements being financed are located in Burke County, as are most of the facilities to be financed, there is one counseling office location in Lenore at 212 Mulberry Street that the acquisition of was financed by bonds that are now proposed to be refinanced. The proposed bonds to be issued will not constitute a debt to the city of Lenore, nor will the city of Lenore have any obligation to repay the debt. The city council's consideration of this item is only required due to the federal tax law as described in the submitted documentation. So I'll open the public hearing, and if there's anyone that would like to comment on that, and I'll recognize Mr. Alan Robertson of the firm of Robertson Bradshaw Attorneys, if he would like to make any comments to this.
If there are any comments or questions, public comments question, I don't want to interrupt that or preclude that.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else that has any questions or any more understanding should like towards what's going on here? Hearing no one? Yes, sir, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to thank you for the consideration and just, I think the summary hit the high points. This is a federal tax law requirement to do this, and again, does not place any financial burden or obligation on the city of Lenore, and it really is a very technical point that the vast bulk of the Blue Ridge facilities, obviously Grace Hospitals, Downey's Hospitals over in Burke County, but there was this one counseling office that was acquired many years ago in finance of bond proceeds, about 20 years ago, that's now with refundings, refundings being refinanced, and that's why, really that one office is the technical reason we had to come before you today.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate that explanation of what is going on and certainly will, in just a minute, take this under consideration. Anyone else have any comments to make? Not, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any action on this resolution as presented.
I make a motion that we do approve this as it has been presented to us. It's, as the attorney has said and as our information said, it's a technical matter and does not obligate the city, so I would make a motion that we do approve.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Perdue to approve the resolution as presented concerning Blue Ridge Healthcare System Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor, this will be to defer action. We have to wait 24 hours, so we'll hear it next Tuesday at committee of the whole.
Oh, okay.
Pursuant to the statutes regarding public hearings under telecommunications or via virtual matters.
Okay. Thank you. There will.
Motion to close public hearing and make the final decision next Tuesday.
Okay. Is that your motion?
That will.
That will be the motion from Councilmember Perdue, that we close the, we close the public hearing and we will consider this at the committee of the whole meeting, June the...
23rd.
23rd. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Mr. Presswood?
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you. And that carries 6-0 unanimously tonight on that. We appreciate that. So we'll move forward with that at our next committee of the whole meeting. Thank you. That's all the meetings we have tonight for that. Now, we have a current events update from our chief of police, Chief Brent Phelps. Chief, we welcome you here with us this evening. Thank you. We appreciate all that has been going on over the last few weeks, and we appreciate how your department has handled things so very well. So thank you for that. Thank you for coming before us tonight to bring us up to date on how things are and kind of let people know where we are as a department here in the city of Lenore. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Just want to give an update on the protests that we had a little over a week ago, talk about that briefly, answer any questions, and then talk about some, some things that are being discussed nationwide with concerns and just, you know, kind of let council know and then the public know where we stand as of today with those issues in policy, and then answer questions. I've got several photos in here that I took from the protest. We gained information that it looked like we were going to have our first protest on that Sunday. We began to, we had had some discussions about our potential plan within command staff if that occurred. One of the things that I feel like if we did anything well, one of the things early on, I reached out to Reverend Wilfong Sunday afternoon and just asked him if he'd be willing to come and kind of be a go-between between the police department and the protesters. I wanted to have some initial discussions with, with the organizers about, you know, we were going to allow the protest, we were not going to try to stop it, but, you know, obviously, we, we had some ground rules, and he very willingly came and was, was a, just a huge support to, to the community as a whole in his presence, and then we had some other pastors that began to come during the week, and I feel like that played a big part in how the week played out with, with the protest. The first night, the only officer that the group saw was me, and that was an intentional decision I made. I wanted any protester to come to feel like they had the right to come and that we were going to allow that. I didn't want a line of 25 or 30 officers and there be that contention point with emotions being high. I had a large number of staff in the department but out of sight, and, and so that went well. Had some hard discussions. The majority of them were on Facebook Live Sunday evening, but it, I feel like those discussions helped us, and I saw some improvement in the weekend in relations with, with some individuals. The next night, we began to have a few more officers out on the street. I heard from a few ladies that fussed at me, just to be honest with you, that why was I the only one, and there were not other officers out there, and, and so we began to have more. The most officers we had on the street were five, but we, we just tried to interact with, with the protesters and allow them to have their voice and be heard and have discussions and just create an environment where, you know, we were allowing them their constitutional right of freedom of speech, but also being there to protect them. One of our concerns after probably Monday was that we may begin to have outside groups come in and opposing the protesters and that become an issue. And so, but we were very blessed all week long, no issues, very peaceful, and by Saturday, it turned into more of a cookout than it was a protest. They wanted to cook food. We worked through a few logistics, and, and that, that happened, and it had a whole different feel than, than a lot of the protests we saw nationwide. And I'm, I'm proud of that fact of our community, our pastor support, and then our department and just in those interactions. So it, it was a long week. We had a good bit of, at some point, we'll probably see a budget amendment for some overtime for that week, but it, overall, I count it as a success with it being peaceful. So, any questions? I will flip through. Those are some photos that the News Topic took throughout the week. You've probably seen those. Sergeant Moore and a young man, I thought that was a very good photograph. That was on Saturday night. Then just some of the protesters that were out on the street during, during the week. Any, any questions about the protest specifically before I go into the next matters to discuss?
The status of the community's request that I don't remember if it's an American flag or an African flag, that it would be flung in for eight, whatever, 45, 45 seconds. If that can't be flown from the police flag pole, is it possible for that to be done from another city flag pole?
That obviously would not be a decision that the police chief would make. We, that did create a good bit of discussion for, in, in the community. I didn't feel comfortable with the flag, on the flag pole, and we did try to come up with some other options. The organizers weren't completely comfortable with those, and so we as a, between me and the main organizer, just decided that it probably just, it'd be okay to just kind of leave it alone, but...
What if I'm flying both flags together?
And for a matter of clarity, there was never a request from the organizers to take the American flag down. There, there was some discussion on social media, and I think folks, individuals thought they were asking us to take the American flag down, and they never did ask that. And I contacted Ms. Kara, and she kind of reworded some of that on, on social media to clean that up because they, they never did ask that. That would have to be something that, that would be discussed as far as council and the manager. I don't believe as far as flag etiquette that, my concern, and I'll just say it now, my main reason for not feeling comfortable doing that at the police department, and I informed the organizers of this, is if we did that for their flag, and I did research on it, there's nothing associated with hate out of the flag. I don't have issues with the flag, but if we do that for this group, how do we deny another group that wants us to fly their flag? And, and there are some flags that, you know, we could not put on a city flag pole, and so I feel like it created, it has the potential to create issues in, for the city and in the community. And so I just, that was why I didn't feel comfortable doing that. My stance, if asked as the chief, is I don't think we should do that as a city because of that same, that same reasoning. And that's, that was my reasoning then, and that'd be the same reasoning now. But that decision would, you know, we can discuss later. For the eight that can't wait, in the event that any of the council has not heard those, that terminology, there is a push from a nonprofit organization for the eight that can't wait, and it is eight policy concepts or policies that they claim law enforcement needs to have in place for, for, for people to be safe. And so I wanted to go through those and then touch base on where we stand on those within policy currently and what we're looking at. Because if, if you have not been asked questions from members of the public, I feel like that's coming, and wanted council to be aware of where we stand and, and then what we're looking at. The eight topics. Number one is to ban chokeholds or strangleholds. Number two is require de-escalation. Number three, require warning before shooting. Number four requires an officer to exhaust all alternatives before shooting, as far as all use of force alternatives. Number five, duty to intervene. Number six, ban shooting at moving vehicles. Number seven, require a use of force continuum. And number eight, require comprehensive reporting. So I'm going to go over each one of those for our department and what we have in policy, and then tell you some of my, my thoughts as the chief on those. For the number one, ban chokeholds and strangleholds, we do not have anything in department policy that specifically addresses a chokehold. A chokehold is a hold that blocks the airway of an individual. We do have in policy, oh, thank you, we do have in policy terminology about a vascular neck restraint. And what our policy states on that currently is the use of vascular neck restraints by properly trained officers shall be considered a viable option when other methods of control and/or defense have failed or are diminished. A vascular neck restraint in no way should affect the airway of the suspect. That is word for word directly out of, out of our policy. This is a point of debate in our profession today, and it is being discussed. The reason probab, I don't remember the exact year we put this in policy and began to train on it. The, the reason for this technique, it is a tool, and the best scenario for that to be used as an officer, if a suspect is on top of a citizen or on top of an officer, and an officer comes up to try to remove that suspect that is physically on the ground on top of that other individual, this restraint allows that officer to essentially put the individual asleep, get them handcuffed, and immediately come back awake. You have to have training on it, but without that option, your options are strikes. Strikes with your fist, strikes with a baton, a taser, and so it, it is a tool. It is one of those things that sometimes when we have to use force, it's not always pretty. There, there is a right way and a wrong way to do it. We, as a leadership team, are looking at our policy. We are looking at this specific part of our policy. We're looking at different wording, and, and we are looking at the potential to remove It, if it's removed, obviously, we will train officers in other ways to try to accomplish that task, but it may be where, you know, I mean, we would have to train on another type of force if, if we're at that place for those certain situations. Yes, sir?
If a suspect was on top of another person, citizen or officer, and you wound up getting to a point where you needed to use a taser, would that affect the suspect and the other person, or would it only affect the person that it actually contacted with?
As, as long as the probes were only made contact with a suspect, then it would, it would affect just the suspect.
Okay, thank you.
And, and this is not something that we use on a regular basis. Since, since I have been a chief almost two years, I've seen one, one time of this. It was applied correctly, and within seconds, the subject was handcuffed, and there were no injuries. So it, it's not something we do three or four times a week, you know, but it is in our policy, and I don't want to seem like, you know, I want to be straightforward about what's in our current policy and, and what we're looking at as far as options.
Chief, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
The statement here, properly trained officers, to what do you plan to train other officers? Apparently, there are only a few that is properly trained for this technique.
I don't know the specific number that have had the training. Off the top of my head, I am sure there are a handful of our newer officers that have not had the training from one of our defensive tactics instructors, but in, in service for several years, every officer in the department got trained on it. Now, we haven't done that this year, and I know we've hired some people, and so there, there are probably some that have not had the training on it. But, you know, that is something that, that we tried to, we tried to train all officers in. But like I said, it's not, it's not something that is used on a, on a very common basis. And, you know, one of the things I spoke with the manager on, I will be, I've had some conversation, but reaching back out to the league's risk assessment that we're involved in, you know, and if, if they say, a risk assessment-wise, it needs to come out of our policy, then, I mean, that's, that's what we'll do. So, but we're looking into what our options are. Next is required de-escalation. As a matter of policy, as a matter of practice, departments, our department have been training officers in de-escalation for years. All of our officers through in-service training have had forms of de-escalation over the years. We are working to have all of our sworn officers trained through CIT, which is Critical Incident Training. That's a 40-hour class, a week-long class, and there are parts of de-escalation training in that week. It's, I contend that it is the fiber of who we are in de-escalation. It's been called different things over the years. When I was a young teenager and a Newton Police Explorer, I went to a national conference in South Carolina, and we sat through a class called verbal judo, and that was in the early 90s. And verbal judo was something that was taught to officers for years, and those concepts are the same as de-escalation. And so this terminology gets a lot of attention across the country about officers have to have de-escalation, and I agree with that. We do, because when I have taught a communications class at the basic law enforcement training, one of the things I tell the cadets is the thing that makes a good officer, a great officer, is their ability to communicate. And it is vitally important, but this is something that our officers get and we, and we focus on because it's so important. The next one, require warning before shooting. Now, this is straight out of our policy. It says, force used by an officer shall be the minimum degree of reasonably necessary under the circumstances at the time to overcome the suspect's level of resistance. Officers shall never use more force than is reasonably necessary at the time to control a suspect. We, along with de-escalation, we are always going to teach, train, instruct, to communicate, to give warnings, to give those opportunities first, because that, hopefully, if you give a warning or you communicate, you're able to get an individual to do what you need them to do verbally versus having to use force. My contention or issue is probably a better word. My issue with mandating a policy that says an officer has to give a warning before they shoot, I feel like is, is not practical or realistic in some scenarios. A lot of the scenarios, it is completely practical, and we should do that, but there are some, there are some situations to where there is not time for an officer to defend themselves or a member of the public in giving a warning. And if we tell officers, you have to do this, they're either going to hesitate and try to follow policy and get themselves or somebody else hurt, or they're going to willfully violate what we've put in policy. And, and so I think we have to be careful doing a blanket policy of something like this. Most shootings occur, the entire shooting is within three to five seconds. Most of those occur within three to seven feet. That's very close, that's very fast, and to dictate that an officer has to give a verbal warning, I think sets us up for failure as, as police. The next one is similar, requires officers to exhaust all alternatives before shooting. Officers are trained yearly in a lot of different areas, especially force. Officers are trained yearly in a lot of different areas, especially force. We, as a matter of practice, we are always going to try to use other options before having to use a weapon. Because that, we want that to be a last resort type thing. But along kind of in the same lines as the other, to make a policy that says you have to do these other things is not practical, because sometimes tho-- those are not true options. If it's available, if it's time, if, if the situation dictates that you have those options, absolutely, we, we should use other options. Our sidearms or weapons should not be the first thing we go to if, if that is available. But to mandate a policy that says you have to, it kind of goes right along with the warnings. We're, we're going to put officers in a situation to where it's, they're going to violate policy or potentially get themselves or, or members of the public hurt. Duty to intervene. You, you hear a lot about this in social media and on the news about departments needing this. Right out of our policy, it states, officers of the Lenoir Police Department are required to intervene if a reasonable opportunity exists when they know that another officer is using excessive force. This is something that the federal courts have mandated for several decades, that if an officer is aware that another officer is using excessive force, other officers are mandated by federal law to intervene and try to stop it. And so this, this is not a new thing. The, I think the first officers that I became aware of that were charged and received sentencing were some of the supervisors in the Rodney King incident. They, they were convicted in federal court for failing to intervene during that incident. And so this, this is something that we've had in policy as long as I've been at the department. And, and the majority of law enforcement has something to that effect in policy. The other one is ban shooting at moving vehicles. Our policy states, firing at a moving vehicle is prohibited except where the immediate probability of serious injury or death exists for a police officer and/or an innocent third party if an officer does not do so. Before discharging a firearm at a moving vehicle, officers must reasonably believe that the only immediate means of protecting themselves or an innocent third party is the use of deadly force. The eight can't wait in, in this organization, there's some wording on their site, because I read it. It talks about that, you know, most agencies have something in policy about that it's not acceptable, but they say there's loopholes that allow officers to do this. I would contend that those are not loopholes. I would contend that those are exceptions that we need in place for officers to do the right thing at that time. The scenario that comes to mind that fits this is Charlottesville, Virginia. That individual showed up at that protest using that vehicle as a deadly weapon to mow into the crowd. If, if we ban that officers can never shoot at a moving vehicle, we become just like the citizens standing there watching that and don't have the ability to try to stop it. We, we have got to be able to give our officers the right equipment and the proper training in, if it meets certain criteria, give them the ability to evaluate, to protect lives, protect their life and others' lives. We, we've had training on the legalities of this to where we have discussed, and some of our legal, our legal attorney for the department, a couple of years ago, he talked about that, as officers, we cannot put ourselves, inject ourselves into the roadway and claim that our life was in danger. If I'm out of the way of the vehicle, and then I run into the road and get in the path, I'm not going to be covered because I created that opportunity to be in front of that vehicle. And we've had training on, on when those times are appropriate. But if I'm in a place as an officer or citizens are in a place to where somebody is using that vehicle as a weapon, we've got to be able to, to, you know, use the tools that we have to try to protect ourselves and other people. So I, I'm not in favor of completely banning it, but this is what's in our policy currently on this topic. Use of force continuum. This is, a use of force continuum is, is a dated model. When I started in 96, I don't want to tell how long ago that was, because it makes me feel old. We had a use of force continuum at the direction of legal guidance. Probably 15 years ago, we went away from a continuum to a control options chart, and I'll show you what the chart looks like in a minute. Our policy states that Lenoir Police Department use of force options chart is a model to show the various use of force options available to trained officers for the effective and reasonable control of suspect resistance, based on suspect's actions and the officer's perception of the threat. One of the, the issues with the continuums is they looked like a stair step. And it, by the way they visually looked, they looked like officers had to go step by step by step. And that's, as I've already explained, not necessarily a viable option. So, so this chart, you'll see in the middle is officer presence, then to the left is verbal commands, and then it kind of goes around the wheel to the different options that we have. And we have seven, seven criteria or seven sections where different control options fall into. The other thing with a continuum is that model kind of dictates that every officer should, should do it the same. Well, that's not realistic. If, if I have to engage with somebody physically, I may be able to handle that individual and not use other types of force. But another officer, who maybe is not as my size or, or strength-wise, they may not be able to physically handle that individual, and they may have to use one of these other control options to gain somebody's compliance. And so the model shows, here's the things that are accepted, here's the, the things that, that we train on, but it allows the officers to evaluate the totality of the circumstances and, and use the right amount of force for that situation. But that is what we have in policy. A lot of agencies have either something very similar or another model close to this for, for force options. Comprehensive reporting. Our policy states that when an officer uses force, he or she will submit a use of force report by the end of their next tour of duty. When we use force, we document everyone. There is forms along with incident reports that have to be filled out. Those go through five levels of supervisors, ending with me. Their immediate supervisor, the shift lieutenant or platoon lieutenant, the training lieutenant, then patrol captain or investigations captain, and then ultimately ending up on my desk as the final review. All of those are signed off and dated, and we evaluate those, those situations along with the documentation, the body camera footage. And then that allows us the opportunity to say, yes, we were within policy, we were within North Carolina state law, and, and make sure we're tracking those and documenting those. The other thing it allows us to do is there are a lot of times where our officers legally had the right to do it. They legally had the right to do what they did, and the thing we see and, and we address is it was how they did it. And so when we see those situations where officers, yeah, they legally had the right to do that, but it was the manner in which they did it that created the issue, then we give coaching and training on those. We don't just wait, well, nobody complains, so we're not going to say anything about it. We, we, we address those when we see them. The, the frustrating or hard part with that is I can't discuss that with people inside the building. If, if I give specific instruction to an officer about, you know, you belittled this person when you were talking to them, and that is not the right behavior here, and have had some, almost word for word, if this continues, that this is not going to work out well here at Lenoir, because this is not our culture. We have got to fix this, we've got to change this. But I can't go, I can't discuss that with other department members, much less the public. And so one of the issues that I feel like with where we are is when we do have a complaint, we can't tell them what we did. Now, obviously, if we end up terminating somebody, they realize, oh, hey, that, that officer got fired. But, you know, if it's anything short of that, I can't discuss with them that we suspended them or reprimanded them or sent them to training. All I get to say is, we have looked into the complaint and we have handled it. Well, a lot of the public doesn't necessarily believe that. They, they think we, we just cover that up. I, I think myself and a lot of chiefs would look really good if we were able to say, this is what we did, and this is how we did it. But that's one of those things for, you know, with personnel law, that where we feel handcuffed. You know, sometimes when we have had a personnel issue, and this is through my years of experience at the department, and an employee either resigns or is terminated, the only version that the other employees hear are from the disgruntled employee that got terminated or disciplined. Because the department can't go into why they did what they did, and so of course, that individual has its version, will then morale start, you know, they, they, they run so-and-so off because of this. Well, that's not accurate, because most of the time, people don't go to their buddies and say, oh, yeah, I did this and this, and, you know, they were going to fire me, so I quit. So it, it, I understand at times from the public standpoint where that can be a, an issue, because we can't be as transparent with how we handle disciplinary issues as they would like. And, and I don't have an answer to that tonight, but it, it is, it can be frustrating. But we've had the reporting as long as I've been at the department. One of the pieces with the eight that can't wait is mandating that if officers point weapons at people, that's reported. That's been in policy as long as I've been there. If we challenge somebody with a weapon and they comply, and we holster, we still do a use of force report documenting that. And a lot of young officers, I remember feeling this way when I came, thinking, well, I didn't do anything but point a weapon, I didn't have to touch them, I didn't have to strike them, why am I having to fill out this report? Well, our contention, and now that I've matured and gained some experience, is that those are times where we show the restraint we used. We, we, we had a situation where we felt like we needed to use a, potentially use a weapon, and we were able to de-escalate it, or we were able to gain compliance, and we didn't have to use it. And so those situations, we contend, are vitally important to report, because it shows when, when you did a good job, when you didn't, you were able to handle a situation and didn't have to fire that weapon. But, but that's been in policy. I asked Sergeant Moore, because he's been there about two and a half years longer than me, and I asked him if that was in policy when he came, and he said it was. So our guess is it's probably been in policy 30 or 35 years, because he's been there about 28. But that, that's in policy as well. That is the bulk of what I plan to talk about. You'll see on the slide that if there are groups, I'm meeting with a group Thursday. If there are groups, myself, command staff, captains, we, we would be more than happy to come and, and, and talk and interact. I begin to have conversations with the organizers during the protest about where, where we go from here. How do we get off the sidewalk and get to a room with a table? And we sit down and discuss what, what change looks like, and, and what, what are concerns, what are issues, and begin to have those conversations. And I think that's where it starts. Because I asked several folks on the sidewalk and, and making small talk, I said, what does change look like to you? What, what exactly does that mean? And a lot of people had a hard time answering that. And so, you know, for us as law enforcement, you know, I kind of need a vision to understand, okay, from the community, how do we, how do we know we're successful in, in trying to do our job, but also trying to meet the needs of the community if we don't hear that from them? And so we're, we're going to be working on having some of those talks at some point. I know we've had some discussion about maybe, my thought is, we start with some small groups, and then those build maybe into some community forums or, or different things. But that, that's where we are today. Questions that you guys have?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make this statement in regards to our police department, our city personnel, and all those that are in leadership. I think we're making an excellent step into improving or making the worst better. I think the transparency in our police department is coming forth now, and I think that with the protests, with the non-violence and no real action, that folks understand. And what you are doing with, with this and doing it with other organizations within the community, I think it'd give people a better understanding and perspective of our police department. And I'd just like to say my hat's off to you and to your department for handling it and, you know, what you guys do. I've heard a lot of communication, a lot of talk, and people are open now to hear from the police department. People are, well, I don't know if you can ever, there's some people are not going to never appreciate the police department until you guys do what we're doing now, doing something good or to rescue somebody from something. But from the pastor's standpoint and from my standpoint, I just see a, a big improvement and thank you and your force or your people for doing what you're doing. So, thank you.
I, I appreciate you saying that. It's, it's tough. I, I told the manager the, the other week, he had, he'd gotten his money out of me for about a week or two. I, I had earned it. But it, it, I think it comes down to the relationship in, in that work. You know, I, I've been married longer than I want to admit, but if I quit working on that relationship, it'll fall apart too. And so with any relationship, we've got to put work in. Any other thoughts?
Any other questions, anyone, anybody on the, on the line that would like to ask a question, any kind?
Hey, Chief, this is Chrissy.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, yeah, so I would like to say that in the eight years of the time I've been back in Lenoir, I'm not aware, thank God, I'm not aware of the strange situations that we see on social media to the extent that, you know, it just makes you feel good to be here. At the same time, I do applaud the fact that you guys, and you're taking the lead on listening. I think the listening sessions or just hearing and understanding what people have on their minds will go a long way. And then, you know, from the policies that you read, it seems like there's some required components in some of the, the eight pieces that we have as not requirements. I think it's great that we covered those, but at the same time, we're showing that we're looking at all those pieces. Because should there be some thoughts that people have about any of those areas, then we're, we're showing that we're looking at them. I would be interested in the, in, to learning more over time about the de-escalation training and what that looks the de-escalation training, and what that looks like, how comfortable you, you feel like that's been done on a regular basis, or is it something that we need to do more often, so it, it doesn't feel like, you know, of course, people are new coming in, they need it, and people that have been with organizations, they need reminders, so. But I think you're saying that you're going to be looking at all those policies, and that's great, but to share a little bit more along the way. If you see areas that you could improve on, that'd be great. So, we are also the ones helping communicate that, and when people come to us in the community. But I think it's great that we're looking at them, and where there's areas to improve, I'm sure you're taking the lead with that. But that's, I'm, I'm happy that we're taking a look at the whole, all the policies. That, that feels good.
Thank you. I, I agree. I, I think we will be doing de-escalation training long after I, I, I don't work for the city anymore. I, I think that is an area or a topic that, I mean, there, there will be constant training for, for officers, because it's, it's such a key component. And so, I agree that, that, you know, we've got to look at that and continue to, to do that in a lot of different areas.
Anyone else have a comment or a question?
Chief, when it comes to de-escalation training, how, how much of that is done in the BLT program coming out?
There, there is some. I don't know that they have, I'm not aware of a block that is just de-escalation training, so to speak, like some of the specialized classes that, that we send officers to. I know there is a, a block, I used to teach it, it's an eight-hour block, and it's called Communication Skills for Law Enforcement. And there are a lot of those techniques in, in, in components of de-escalation in that eight-hour block during BLT. And then there, there are other blocks where types of de-escalation training, some of the hands-on, with, with handcuffing, with control techniques, with response, where officers are trained on, you know, how, how to give verbal commands, how to engage with individuals, to try to gain compliance without, without having to, to use force.
Seems like that would be a good place to really kind of beef that up.
Yeah.
Just get the new officers. With very little contact I've had out in the community lately, I did have a couple of calls and a couple of emails that really praised you and your staff for what, the way you guys handled, handled that. And I had people call me, you know, just, just to, just to say, hey, Ben, you guys, that, your police department just did a great, great job. So, I wanted you to be.
I appreciate that.
Aware of that.
I'll relay that in the, in the, the kind words of, of others to, to the staff, because they're, by Saturday, that I had some tired officers at, at the department, but.
Well, I mean, most of us, all we see is the news, and we see the bad. And it's, it's a shame that all police officers had to get clumped into one.
Right.
Pocket, because there's, there's, and it's not, I, I know that we've not had all good cops along the way. You've had to let some go, and it's like that with any organization. So, there's always room to, to improve. But, I mean, I think we've done a great job, and yeah.
Well, I, I think, I wish a lot of, we, we see bad things on the news most of the time.
Right.
Or we read bad things in the news, depending on what, what we read. But I wish that people could focus on how Lenore has handled this.
Yes.
Because, yes, our police officers have done a good job, but our citizens have done a tremendous job.
Absolutely. That's right. Yes.
And, and there's so many cities that could take note of how our citizens have responded, and how the community leaders have responded.
Yep.
And as tough as your job has been, it's made it a lot easier.
Absolutely.
And, and so, I'm, I'm proud of, of Lenore, and that includes the police department, and that includes our, our citizens. So.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
Because I agree 100% that I'm proud of, of the part we played, but we could not have had a week of peaceful protest without the attitude from our citizens of being in that manner.
Yeah.
I told Reverend Wilf on Tuesday or Wednesday night, I said, I feel like a big part of this being peaceful was your presence being here, and I thanked him. One gentleman, one night, was, was giving me down the road about some stuff, and one of the citizens standing there, she pretty much ran him off, and took up for me. And I, I told her, I said, you didn't have to do that. And, and she said, we don't want no trouble here. And, and so, I, I agree 100% that it was a total group effort for the week to be peaceful. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. We're very blessed in this community. Not only our citizen, but our police department, we thank you, not only for what you've been going through for the last couple of weeks, but all the time. We appreciate the attitude, appreciate the way our, our fellows handle, and ladies, handle themselves in, in all things. We know human nature at some time kicks in, and we know things can happen. But I think they are trained well. I think they understand what is expected of them, and they understand what we all expect of them. And I think that's what we're seeing in our community. So, we, we appreciate it very much. We do thank you for all that you have been doing, and will continue to do. We know, we have talked about ways to move forward.
Correct.
We've had some preliminary meetings that we've been involved in, putting some groups together. We want to see that happen. We're going to keep that moving.
Yep.
In the right direction. Not going to let it just fade out and say, okay, well, we got through this.
That's great.
We're not going to do it. No, that's not the way it works. We need to look back and sit down and, and come up with the ideas. And several different groups that we've already talked about, putting together, and maybe some community meetings again that we've had in the past, maybe looking at some more of that, and how we do that. Focused a lot on what we're doing and what we're talking about right here. So, I think it's very important.
Yes, sir.
And that, I think, is the reason we have the good relationship that we do, because we have done that in the past, and we, we are open to that. So, so thank you. Anyone else have any comments for, Chief? Thank you for putting this together tonight.
Yes, sir.
We really appreciate it. We know you, you've got some others to do in this week, and in, and maybe some coming weeks, and we appreciate it. I think that's going to be really a, a good thing for our community. So, we appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Coming and doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on our agenda to our consent agenda items tonight, consisting of minutes from the City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 2, 2020, our minutes of the City Council Budget Workshop session of May 21, 2020, and our minutes from the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Tuesday, May 26. All these were as submitted. I will open that for any discussion and/or motion concerning the consent agenda.
Make a motion. We approve consent agenda item as presented.
Have a motion from Councilmember Willis to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you on the phone. Thank you very much. And that carries unanimously, and we appreciate that. So, we'll move on then. It is now time on our agenda for any requests, petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address us this evening, that would be open at this time. Yes, sir, if you would, if you will give your name and address.
My name is Wayne Douglas. I own the residential property at 308 Ridge Street here within the city limits of Lenore.
Okay.
Two weeks ago, Mayor Gibbons, at the June 2 City Council meeting, I gave you more than a dou-, more than a dozen copies of a statement that I prepared for delivery to the entire city council. I'm just, are you able to give me a status report on that situation?
Yes, sir. We have, we did receive those, and all the council members have, have received them, and a chance to, to look over them at this time.
Did you give a copy of my statement to Police Chief Phelps?
Uh, yes, we did. Mr. Ma-, Manager is checking his head.
Okay, so there'll be some to see. Well, I just, I think it's reasonable to point out that the 4th of July is once again going to be before the next city council meeting. It's just in a bit more than two weeks. So, it's been a pretty miserable experience, Mayor Gibbons. And I'm just asking that the laws of the state of North Carolina be respected.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. And we will, certainly all these are being looked into and taken under consideration. So.
Is there any sort of time frame? It's going to take a month, two months, or maybe like next 4th of July?
Uh, not until we've had a chance to, to actually look it over and see what, where it stands. I guess when the chief has a chance to look at his situation and all that.
Were you able to read the statement yourself?
I have been, I have looked at it. I haven't read it all, but I have looked at it.
Your time stamp?
Yeah, yeah.
What would your.
Get back, we can't hear you, sir.
You have to come back to the podium, sir.
What would your advice to me be if I go through the same situation, that my home is attacked by illegal fireworks this, this coming 4th of July?
I really can't advise on that, because I do not, you know, I, I don't know that, what the laws are and those kind of things. Best thing to do, maybe to give, the chief is in the back saying, I'd be glad for you to give him a call, and let him, you discuss that with him, if you would.
So, are you preparing to argue that this is, I, I've been a student out at the community college for five years now, and I asked the professor who teaches the legal course out there to give me the copy of the state law regarding the laws, the North, the laws of North Carolina regulations on fireworks. So, do you have any question of that, did you, did you read that state, the legal, the legal document?
I have looked at it again.
So, is that question?
I can't make any comment to that.
Mr. Mayor, this is the city attorney. I just want to remind everyone that this is the public comment period.
Right.
Is that for you, if you want to, if you want to engage and exchange back and forth?
But it's a public comment period.
Right. You understand that. Thank you, sir. And we appreciate your comments, and we'd like to say we are looking at what you presented to us.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just that I do need specific information is what I'm looking for.
We appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to adjust the, or adjust, discuss anything during this time? Any comments? Yes, sir, if you would, give us your name and address. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Charles Senth. I'm from Happy Hollow Lane in Lenore, North Carolina. And I have a copy of my remarks for the clerk. First, I have to say, I, I was here last night for the county commission meeting, and I commented to my wife about none of the commissioners wore a mask. The place was crowded, and police officers didn't even wear masks. She said, well, if it's that way tonight, you ought to get on them. So, I'm glad to say it's, you're doing a good job, apparently.
Thank you.
After watching four Minneapolis policemen strangle another American citizen's death because a store clerk accused him of paying with a bogus $20 bill, I wanted to be a part of changing the way our police are screened, hired, trained, and disciplined. I did a bit of research. I found a definition of strangulation worth sharing. Manual strangulation, also known as throttling, is strangling with the hands, fingers, or other extremities, and sometimes also with blunt objects, such as batons. Depending on how the strangling is performed, it may compress the airway, interfere with the flow of blood in the neck, or work in a combination of the two. Consequently, manual strangulation may damage the larynx and fracture the hyoid, hyoid, or other bones in the neck. In cases of airway compression, manual strangulation leads to the frightening sensation of air hunger, and may induce violent struggling. Studies have found strangulation firmly associated with sexual and sadistic murders. I also found another tidbit. Statistically, Americans, America's police kill three Americans every day. Not all are strangled to death. Many are shot in the back as they run away from police. Some shot as they sit in their vehicle. Others shot to death while pinned other, under one or more officers. The list: George Perry Floyd, Rayshard Brooks, Michael Brown, Philip Quinn, Robert Christian, Jamar Clark, Laquan McDonald, Philando Castile, Justin Damon, D. Ray McKesson, Erica Garner, Darrell Fields, Edward Crawford, Moi Haiden Moe. Did I miss one? Two? A dozen? My only defense is that there are so many, and they keep happening. Watching recent protests, it is clear that America's police present a clear and present danger to our right to petition our government for redress. Qualified immunity must be examined and refined, if not repealed. Police must accept responsibility for their negligence. Police candidates must undergo psychological screening. Police candidates must be thoroughly vetted. Police candidates must be trained to serve, not kill, citizens. Shooting a citizen in the back is a capital offense. We need a federal database of police inflicted injuries and deaths. We must demilitarize America's police. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? If not, we'll move on. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Just a couple items for information this evening. The Planted Word meeting on Monday the 22nd, I think, is canceled. The Lenore Tourism Development Authority will meet on Thursday, June 18 at 4:00 p.m. in a Zoom meeting. The Lenore Business Development Board will meet on June 18, Thursday, at 6:00 p.m. in a Zoom meeting. The Airport Authority will meet on June 24, Wednesday, at noon, and that'll be a Zoom meeting as well. The Committee of the Whole will meet next Tuesday, the 23rd, 8:30 a.m., 3rd floor, City Hall, to cover a lot of those items we've deferred from public hearings to, to be considered then. City offices will be closed on Friday, July 3, in observance of the Penance Day. And as you know, all the city events are canceled the 4th of July, as well as the fireworks, based on the COVID-19 pandemic. And the city council will conduct only one meeting next month. That'll be the 21st, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Hildebrand, of any, any events going on, or anything that's happening? Okay, we'll move on then to, we have a report and a recommendation of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr, or anything?
No news. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I do have a quick announcement about a board appointment. Would like to announce that Pam Houstioski is the, the general manager of Hampton Inn and Suites of Lenore will be putting up for consideration of appointment to our city of Lenore, the Tourism Development Authority, the LTDA. This appointment would be presented to the council for consideration of approval at their July 20, our 21st city council meeting. So, I just wanted to bring that up. She is general manager. Summer Combs served on the board. It was the general manager of the Hampton Inn, and she has left, taken a job elsewhere. So, Pam is the new manager there. And the way the LTDA is set up, we have to have a certain number that represent the occupancy tax, people who supply the occupancy taxes on our board. And so, we have several of those from our hotels and others that are involved. So, that's the reason for making this recommendation of Pam to our, our tourism board. So, I put that to you for your consideration. Are there anything else for many of our council members that need to be brought up?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Concern, and I think this may be to Jared. Jared, I've been patiently waiting to see these new trucks perform that pick up my containers, and I have not yet, and I've waited for two weeks, sitting out on my front yard, waiting to see how these trucks operate. And I have not seen one yet. What is the holdup?
You, you need something else to do.
All week, just waiting.
I only go out on Mondays. My garbage is picked up on Mondays, and I make it a point. For the last two weeks, I haven't seen one.
Mr. Wright, did you hear that?
I, I did hear that. Yeah. We, we've had the new trucks out on Mondays, and Tuesdays are out fairly sporadically, doing some driver training. We are finalizing the rear loader and small truck pack route for Monday. Those should be fully operational next Monday. So, if you want to reschedule that appointment to next Monday.
I'm gonna go by there and make sure it's out there. Thank you. I'm going to go by there and make sure he's out there. Thank you, Jared, for that report on that and for the update on that. Anything else that can come before us this evening? If not, we stand adjourned.